Reverend James El Nettas in the audience. We're very happy today to have with us Reverend James El Nettas, pastor of the Mount Vernon Baptist Church Westwood, to deliver the indication. Reverend Nettas, if you could come to the podium. So let everybody stand and remain standing until after the pledge of allegiance to the flag. With our heads bowed. Oh God, our heavenly Father, we come to give you special thanks for this day. And the privilege to assemble ourselves here in this place for the purpose of conducting governmental affairs for our city. Thank you, Father, for each of these our council representatives who have through sacrificial commitment given themselves into the service for the people of this city. Help us, Father, to be dedicated to the proposition of reaching a goal and making Memphis a place of good abhorred. Where there will be no hunger in our children, no harmless for our families, no employment for those who desire to work. Lord, we thank you in faith because we know that all things are possible to lead in thee for those who believe. Bless this assembly here now that we might do those things that are pleasing in your sight. And for this, we give you the glory and the praise forever. In Jesus' name. Amen. Reverend Nettas, if you'd remain at the podium. Give it to Councilman Lauer. Councilman Lauer would like to make a presentation to you.
Thank you.
For those of you in the audience who don't know that Reverend Nettas has served this community in so many capacities, and we certainly do appreciate all of his efforts. And one that stands out foremost in my mind, he served on the original council when we were changed from the the commission of form of government to the city council form of government back in 1968, representing the district that I represent on the council now, District 6. And we certainly do appreciate you Reverend Nettas. God bless you.
Reverend Nettas, it's my honor to present to you this certificate designating you as chaplain of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Comtoe, please call the roll.
Council members Hooks.
Here.
Lefler.
Here.
Lowry.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
McCormick.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Rubin. Sammons.
Here.
Sonnenberg.
Here.
Van der Scaff.
Here.
Waylon.
Here.
Wilbon.
Here.
Chairman Ford.
We do have a quorum in the meeting. It's called the order. Will you please call the consent agenda please?
General ordinance up for second reading. Item 1, ordinance number 4151. Item 2 is the resolution approving the standard sewer improvement contract for Germantown Dexter SC-1 sewers. Item 3 is a resolution approving vinyl plaid of Richwood PD Phase 9, case number PD-85-359CC. Item 4 is a resolution approving contract time extension for EIWM Incorporated and Viraplex, case number SUP-82-008CC. Item 5 is a resolution accepting River Ridge internal sewers and authorizing release of bond. Item 6 is a resolution accepting Riverwood Farm Subdivision 6th Edition Phase 1 and authorizing release of bond, case number S-91-062CC. Items added during the executive session. Item 16 is a resolution accepting Richwood PD Phase 7, revised and authorizing release of bond, case number PD-85-359CC. And item 17 is a resolution praising Cynthia Karen Holling.
Where are the adoption? The items are read.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman.
Could we possibly add item number 20, which is an item on for first reading?
Item 20 is not on. It was objected to in the executive session, so it's not added.
Oh, it was dropped? It isn't on for first reading?
No. It's been moved and said it's going to be adopted. Councilwoman Lefler?
Uh, I don't want to speak to that. I want to speak after we're through with that.
Please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Hooks.
Yes.
Lefler.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marshall.
Aye.
McCormick.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Rubin.
Yes.
Sammons.
Aye.
Sonnenberg.
Aye.
Van der Scaff.
Aye.
Waylon.
Aye.
Wilbon.
Yes.
Chairman Ford.
Aye. Consent agenda is adopted. Councilwoman Lefler?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, I would like to request that we reconsider items 18 and 19 from last week's agenda. That's case number PD-89319 and case number PD-91330 having to do with the south bluffs development and the river walk. I, uh, I ask for this reconsideration for two primary reasons. One is I felt very uncomfortable last week and have grown more concerned as the week has gone by about the two-year limitation. Uh, I don't think we ever do anything in two years, and I don't think we're gonna build a river bluff and, uh, walk in two years. And the other thing is I question whether or not the $109,000 bond was satisfactory. And today, Mr. Rubin has shown me a letter that he has received from the city engineer, some of which he might like to share with you.
Councilman Rubin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I received a phone call this week from a constituent of mine. It was also a thought of mine last week, but I really didn't give in to it. But it had to do with, uh, the continuing integrity of the surface of the bluff. Uh, if, um, as a result of building the walk into the side of the bluff, that the integrity of the surface changed to the extent that maybe a home foundation on the surface were to crack or make some changes substantially affected uh, the, uh, structure on the bluff. Uh, in that context, I asked the city engineer, Mr. Collins, who would have responsibility for that if that were to happen? And of course, uh, there were many or several different considerations, primarily those being, uh, who actually did the construction, whether it was the state or the city or a combination thereof. Ultimately, and I think the key sentence in this, in either case, the city or the state would be responsible and liable for damages to any building or land on top of the bluff which might be damaged as a result of the river walk construction. Uh, I asked that simply in behalf of my constituent. I gave copies of it to several members of the council just for their information. May or may not be something you may choose individually to take into consideration. But that's the information.
Councilman Wilbon?
Procedurally, we have not voted on reconsideration, the motion to reconsider yet. So I think we are somewhat improper to be discussing the matter until we vote on reconsideration, the motion to reconsider.
I don't really have any lights, other than your light, though. I was, uh, ruling, uh, responding to some comments that were made going to be considered. I don't really have any lights.
I don't believe there's ever been a second.
Yes, there was. There has been a second. Again, it's been moved and probably seconded, that, uh, again, is this the purpose of actually dropping them from the agenda or to order you to?
No, this was to reconsider. We acted on these last week, and I am moving to reconsider.
Reconsider them for the purpose of what? Uh, dropping them or what?
No, changing the requirements.
Changing the requirement, okay.
That's what I have in mind. Some other people might have something else. I just want us to reconsider it. I'm not sure that we arrived at the
Okay.
wisest, uh, possible solution last week.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm Herschel Feibleman, and I represented Mr. Turley last week. Uh, inasmuch as a letter of Mr. Collins has been distributed.
Now, we've discussed.
And inasmuch as my client has just told me that Mr. Collins said to him what he said last week, namely, that there is no detriment to the bluff stability by the design that was approved. I wish, if you're gonna, if this is a serious matter. It really is. The, uh, the development of downtown Memphis to some degree at least hangs in the balance. Because if we can really reconsider everything we do, it's gonna, it's gonna do a whole lot to incentive.
Then we can move on to reconsideration.
I wish you would do this. I wish you would let Mr. Collins come down. At least if his letter is gonna be read, I think Mr. Rubin's is correct in what he said. That's essentially a legal opinion. If the city does something wrong, they can be sued. Anybody would know that. But I think if you're gonna be swayed in any manner by what Mr. Collins has written, I think you would be well-served to have him state to you again, as he stated last week, that this is something which can be done safely.
Okay. Will you please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Please, I, I have a question that I, and that's why I pressed my light several times.
Yes, uh-huh.
Uh, Ms. Lefler, did you plan to reconsider that and, and make some changes and vote on it again today or?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
You are planning?
Well, I think that would be terribly unfair. No, I, I would, um, whatever the will of the council is, but certainly not today. Well, uh, we vote it to at least the 29th, possibly, uh, January the, whatever that would be, well, 5th.
Uh, my, my problem is that there was a, a time rush and, and really I'd be more inclined to reconsider if it could be voted on today with maybe just some slight changes.
I'm sorry, but, uh, that would not be part of my motion, 'cause I don't think that would be fair to the builder. I don't understand what the time constraint is because, uh, uh, you know, they, they've got all those lots down there, uh, some of them are sold, a lot of them are not sold, and, uh, they're not waiting on us to start building. But anyway, that's the answer to the question.
Again, the motion is technically not before us right now because, uh, uh, it was made by Councilwoman Lefler. She was not on the prevailing side last week. It has to be made by someone who was on the prevailing side.
Yes, I was.
Not according to the minister.
I don't care what the minister. Well, I don't care what the minister said. I voted for that. No, she didn't vote for it.
There are only two no votes.
Huh?
There were two no votes.
No, she voted. No, way of a pass.
Mr. Chairman, I can vouch for Councilwoman Lefler. She's really a very honest person.
That just says a little bit more for the argument that Councilwoman McCormick says these minutes are gonna have to get to us a little bit earlier if you're gonna really look into it and make sure you have all these mistakes up.
That's all we got.
But Jim and Mary Oles were the only two.
That's correct. The minutes are incorrect on that.
Okay.
I'll have to read the official motion on.
Okay, uh, again, will the council call the roll? On the reconsideration.
Hooks. Lefler.
Yes.
Lowry.
No.
Marshall.
No.
McCormick.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Rubin.
Yes.
Sammons.
Yes.
Sonnenberg.
Yes.
Van der Scaff.
Yes.
Waylon.
Yes.
Wilbon.
No.
Chairman Ford.
No. Uh, yes, eyes have it, uh, again, Councilwoman Lefler?
Um, whatever the, um, is the will of the council, um, we're not gonna meet till the 29th, and the 29th, I understand, is, is really packed. So possibly January the 5th would be a good time to rehear, and that gives everybody time to marshal their guns and, and get ready to have a go at it.
Okay, you wanna make a motion to delay these?
I'm moved to delay until January the 5th.
Second.
Okay, uh, if there's no objection from anybody on the council, uh, items 18 and 19 will be held.
18 and 19, we voted on them together.
Will be held until, uh, January the 5th. Okay. I did have, uh, again, uh, I'm aware of one card in the audience that wanted to speak in reference to that, and I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to, uh,
It's a little late.
Lee Davis?
Lee. I know because she's.
Considering, uh, hello, my name is Lee Davis, and that's my card. Considering what the council has just done, because I was going to speak on behalf of delaying the reading of this resolution, um, I don't think it's necessary for me to give my card at this point.
Not at all.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Councilman Marshall?
Mr. Chairman, has that issue been disposed of? Is that, is that, I'll pass it this time.
Okay.
Chairman, if you could call item 15.
Again, who has read the minutes of a previous meeting?
Ms. Chairman, I've read the minutes and found them incorrect, and I need to make some corrections. I'd like to move to correct the minutes prior to their adoption on page 733 in the fifth paragraph. Should read voting "I", councilmembers Hooks, Lowry, Marshall, Sonnenberg, Wilbon, Ford, Rubin, Sammons, Waylon, and Lefler. Voting "Nay", McCormick, and Moore. The vote being insufficient for passage, the chairman declared the motion failed. That's the item we reconsidered today, and that's where the, the arrows were. Um, I found no other arrows in the minutes except that I must add to the minutes a corrected copy of the agreement which is going to be, uh, uh, reconsidered. The, uh, corrections in the amended resolution to the final site plan simply are editorial, uh, correcting some of the typos in it and, uh, correcting a date from 95 to 96. Is that correct, Mr. Marshall? So I'd like to add that segment to the minutes as corrected, and they are correct on the, uh, segment. So with those changes, I move, uh, the approval of the minutes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. It's stated by Councilwoman McCormick. Councilwoman Lefler?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just need to get that straight. What was it that you read all those names and then said the chair announced it failed?
Uh.
Was that the river walk?
It, it, the chair must have announced that it passed, mustn't it?
Yeah, it had to pass, and I, and I.
Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, but I also did not vote in the affirmative I passed.
You passed. Thank you.
Uh, I, I think it was McCormick and Moore who voted no.
Thank you for the correction, and I apologize for the frustrating, 'cause it's just too hard to get these minutes, just the last couple of minutes, and I, I won't read them again uh, when you just bring them in at the last minute. So we're gonna have to.
Councilwoman Sonnenberg, did you wanna?
That was my question too, 'cause she said they had failed, and I, I. Is that what the minutes say, that it failed?
The minutes do say that it failed. Uh, the voting being, and that's gonna have to be sufficient for passage, the chairman declared the motion passed. And I'm correcting that with Mr. Council records, person on the records itself. Thank you.
Please call the roll on the minutes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Lefler.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marshall.
Aye.
McCormick.
Aye.
Moore.
Yes.
Rubin.
Aye.
Sammons.
Aye.
Sonnenberg.
Aye.
Van der Scaff.
Aye.
Waylon.
Aye.
Wilbon.
Yes.
Chairman Ford.
Yes. Uh, the minutes of a previous meeting are approved. Please call item 15.
Item 15 is the election of city council chairman for 1993.
Councilman Marshall?
Mr. Chairman, it's my honor to nominate Councilman Jack Sammons for the 1993 chairmanship.
Second.
Again, it's been moved and seconded that, that Councilman Jack Salmon be nominated for the chairmanship for 1993. Call the roll.
Hooks.
Yes.
Lefler.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marshall.
Aye.
McCormick.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Rubin.
Aye.
Sammons.
Aye.
Sonnenberg.
Aye.
Van der Scaff.
Aye.
Waylon.
Aye.
Wilbon.
Aye.
Chairman Ford.
Aye.
What is it?
Six.
Six.
Six, yes. Seven, pass.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request, if there's anything in the rules of procedure that require constitutional majority of the, uh, members for the selection of a chairmanship, I couldn't find anything. If Mr. Wade perhaps could elucidate on that matter. Our rules of order do not address the requirements for electing a chairman. Uh, in default of our rules addressing the subject, Robert's Rules of Order, uh, applies. And I have not checked specifically, but it's my understanding that a majority of the, those present and voting is required to pass any item. Present and voting? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, when you say present and voting, that when you're passing, that's, that's, is that, that's not voting, no, uh?
Well, if you abstain, that's not voting.
That's not voting. So, uh, again, your ruling is that, uh?
I would double-check that.
Uh-huh.
I would double-check.
Yeah, okay. We need to know on this because it, depend upon what he says, this, this.
Mr. Chairman, as I recall, the, uh, no motion was made to ever close the nominations. Uh, it seems to me that in the absence of that, someone else can be nominated. And, uh, I'd like to exercise that prerogative at this time.
From a technical standpoint, I'm not so sure we, if I'm, should we get the city attorneys, uh, or the council attorneys ruling on it, though. Uh, again, if, if the, the people that pass, I'm not sure the six may actually be enough to affirm this, I'm not sure. It just depend on what his opinion of.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could I be recognized?
Yes, uh-huh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't know what our rules are gonna say, but you and I have served on this council, I believe, 13 years now. And for the previous 12 years, uh, we have operated in one way. Uh, if we're gonna have a change of rules, I think it would be wise to announce it before we have any nominations or any votes. Uh, the, the way we have voted in, in the last 12 years that you and I have voted is that the first person to get seven votes, uh, wins the election. Uh, I'm perfectly willing, uh, to go by some new system that I think it ought to be announced before nominations are put on the floor and before we vote.
Certainly, I'm willing to do whatever the, the will of the majority of the council is.
I just don't think we should change the rules without an announcement. Or not change the rules, but change the custom if there is no rule.
Chairman, will you accept a motion?
I'm trying to get an opinion from our attorney, though.
Will you accept a question?
Yes, of course.
All right. If there is a rule that, uh, the, uh, people who pass are not counted as a part of the voting, then I'd like to know if we can have the opportunity of changing our vote to a no.
I think you could change it. Either way, I haven't announced anything yet, 'cause I'm trying to get some kinda rule.
That's a good rule.
Mm-hmm.
I had a piece of your birthday cake.
Couldn't have even dealt with that right now.
I enjoyed the cake.
That surprised the hell out of me when they suddenly did it.
When are we gonna have martinis? Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Uh, since you have not, uh, announced the vote, I'd like to suggest that we put this off till later in the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Under, uh, Robert's Rules of Order, it requires a majority of the members present. An abstention is the same as a negative vote in that case. Which means that you have not satisfied your requirement with six votes.
I understand.
That being the case, Mr. Chairman, I asked earlier, would you entertain a motion to accept another nomination? However, Ms. Sonnenberg's motion, in my mind, carries a lot of weight. We have an awful lot of people here. It seems like we have a whole lot more important things to them to discuss.
I don't know, she made a motion.
Again, I don't have any problem with putting on the agenda a little bit further. I've been everything on this.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that as we do with a number of things, we move this to the heel of the agenda, let's get on with the real business if these people have come.
Again, let me just make a statement. Everything on this agenda is the real business of the agenda, though, and, and all of it is very, very important. I understand we have many, many people, and everything is very kind of emotional in the audience, though, too, and I understand exactly you wanna get out here as soon as you can. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna belittle anything that comes for this council. Everything is important, though. Certainly, we can move this to the heel of the agenda a little bit later on, though. It's not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving to the heel.
Uh, Councilman Marshall?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Having served on the impasse committee, it's your committee, sir, I would like to renew my request that we veto the impasse committee's recommendations before this council remove it from the table and vote on it right here and now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion to override the impasse committee's veto.
Again, it has been moved and seconded that we veto, uh, the recommendation made by the impasse committee. Uh, Councilwoman Lefler?
Uh, I would very much like to hear, I'm sure we're gonna hear from the union representatives, and I would like to hear from them. I would also like to hear from the Memphis Light Gas and Water people. I have here some, um, figures that they gave to me, and I put one in your box, but just to be sure you have it in front of you while we're discussing this, I'm gonna pass them around.
Okay. Okay, we can, uh...
That's the state I was in before.
Again, at this time, we can hear from, uh, the representative of MLGW, and then we hear from, uh,
Mr. Chairman? Point of order, please, sir?
Yes, Councilwoman Sonnenberg?
Uh, could we set some ground rules and limit the amount of time that both sides have speakers? I, I, I know we...
Please, it, we.
I know we wanna be very fair and, and hear all the testimony, but at the same time, we do, uh, have a lot of business and we're, uh, if you could set a reasonable length of time there for both sides.
Again, we're gonna set a reasonable, each speaker two minutes, and of course, we've set some time aside for the attorney from, uh, representatives from both sides also.
Uh, but, but could, could we have a total number of minutes free either, sir?
Uh, with the cards that I have, we're probably talking about 25 minutes, uh...
25 minutes per side?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. Thank you.
Can we have the representative from MLGW to come at this time and make a presentation to us, sir? Again, uh, we understand the emotional aspects that's involved here, but please, we're gonna have to have some order so we can move this on, there's many, many people that's gonna have to, to speak, and then we have many other things that are hotly contested items that's on the agenda. Please, try to give us your cooperation as much as you can.
Mr. Chairman, I'm William S. Crawford, president of Light Gas and Water. And as I'm understanding the impasse procedure, the city council has to either accept the Light Gas and Water proposal or the union proposal. And the impasse committee's recommendation was to accept our proposal. In that light, I hadn't come prepared to speak to this, but in that light, I would like to point out some things that if the union proposal is accepted in total, the impact that that would have on Light Gas and Water. It's not that we're merely a three-point-five percent the union is requesting, and we're at three percent. It's not that we're a half a percent apart. In reality, the cost, total cost of our proposal is two million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. The cost of the union package is six million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, for a difference of a little more than three-point-eight million dollars. Three million, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars to be exact. The IBW's proposed salary increases amount to seven-point-six-three percent of our nineteen-ninety-two payroll. Our proposal, and what we've covered in our budget, is three-point-three-eight percent. In our budget, we actually have three-point-six percent that we put in our budget to cover salary increases for our bargaining unit. If we take the three-point-eight and by the time we look at the roll-up effects, we are very close to what we had proposed in our budget. The thing that I'm deeply concerned about is that the union, on the very first part of their negotiations, put eighty-one job classifications on the table. This is representing nine-hundred-and-nine employees of the two, twenty-one-hundred-and-seventy-three employees of the union. That's forty-two percent of the union's members will get a salary upgrade, and those salary upgrades will range from seven-point-five percent to seventeen-point-three percent. Under the IBW's proposal, union employees will receive an additional holiday compared to the ten holidays received by the fire and police, and the average of all the southeast utilities is currently ten days. Upon implementation of the IBW proposal, on January one, there's fifty-five union employees who each have in excess of two-hundred-and-sixteen sick days leave. They will lose a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, that proposal is, whereas the union is wanting to match what the city has of a flat sixty-five days, that if they accrue that many sick days, they can get up to sixty-five days. I fought this with our local over the past years because I felt we needed an incentive to accumulate sick days. We paid thirty percent of the accumulated sick days to employees at retirement. These fifty-five employees here would lose that. I had employees calling me the other day. I've had both management and union employees calling me concerned. If this is gonna affect them, they are going to retire prior to January one. I've got one employee in our engineering department that called me yesterday, that's a very valued employee, and I had to tell him I'd do the best I could, that that would not apply to him, 'cause he, he was not in the bargaining unit. The union's package, if we do that, will cost us an additional three-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-three days. I would like for the council to be cognizant of the fact that medical premiums have been rising at fourteen percent per year for the last six years. We're self-funded, and we paid out some eighteen million dollars, and if that trend continues, our bargain, our, our medical premium cost will be fifty-two million dollars by the year two thousand, and will be approximating our payroll. We have done some things within our proposal to try to curb costs, and it was interesting to me to be down here before the council committee last Tuesday and getting there early to hear the city's problems in this area of medical costs. And as I understood it, the city's three-point-eight million dollars in the hole now in their medical program, and the council members are trying, saying they wanted to get that to a break even within two years. With costs rising at fourteen percent, and you're trying to get, make up three-point-eight million in two years, you're gonna have to look very hard at, uh, the benefits that you currently give within your medical benefit program. We try to keep a margin of twenty-five percent, not break even, but twenty-five percent. So, our employees that have catastrophic illnesses, and today with AIDS and the other type of illnesses that loom on the horizon, I wanna give you an example. A very close friend of mine at Light Gas and Water for many years came down with cancer. After he retired, he called me numerous times and said, "Is there anything you're gonna do to raise the lifetime benefit under insurance?" Because I'm approaching five-hundred thousand dollars, and that was our limit on our PPO program. We now have that to a million dollars, but if we get hit with those catastrophic-type things, we've gotta have the dollars to fund that. And I certainly would ask you as a council to consider that. Last but not least, I want the council to understand this, that the IBW proposal will require an increase in the amount of our rate increases we've already requested. For nineteen-ninety-three, we had two-point-six-six percent as a rate increase in electric. We would need to raise that to three-point-oh-two percent to fund this. That's a point-three, three-six percent increase. We've got a four percent in gas, we'll need to raise that to four-point-five-six. We've got a twelve-point-two-four in the water, and we'd have to raise that to thirteen-point-seven-four, one-point-five percent. I simply proposed to the council that we got down here at impasse with the union in one position, and we were over here, that's unfortunate. I would hope we could've met somewhere in the middle, but we have got to look at what we're doing. This one thing in here on salary upgrades alone will totally destroy our salary administration program. You cannot take, you will never convince me that there's eighty-one job classifications in this company that we've got messed up to the extent that they all have to be upgraded. We surveyed the whole utility district in the valley. Now, there's some, there's some jobs, and we had agreed to some jobs, but not eighty-one classifications involving nine-hundred-and-two people within the bargaining unit. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else that's to speak, uh, from MLGNW? Okay. I do have quite a few cards from orders, and I have been on particular order, Mr. Willie Burnett. Give me your name and address for the record, Mr. Burnett.
Willie Burnett, I'm chief, union steward down at MLGNW. But before I start, I need to get, make sure the, the council know and understand that I've been denied permission by Barbara Richmond, Assistant Business Manager, Labor Relations, and Wade Stenson, the Personnel Manager. Like to speak in front of the public, said I will be fired. And this was approved by Dwight McClure. So, I need to make sure that I am not retaliated against because, you know, my speaking.
Continue.
Okay. Since I got a few minutes to talk, the reason that the, the budget is so high at MLGNW is management's fault. It's not Fred Ashwell's fault or IBW local members. We have, for instance, when Guy Corder was a supervisor, he retired. When his supervisor retired, they replaced his position with three supervisors. All of these supervisors takes cars home. If, when this supervisor was replaced, they had to make two formans to replace as well as two supervisors. Now, this job could've been done at a cheaper cost to the ratepayers, but they, for some reason, management decided not to replace those formans with, with employees, two lead people and a forman. It would eliminate the supervisor's job. Now, this is going on in a lot of different departments, but because of the time limit, I'm just gonna run through some of it. Now, Fred talked with management, tried to get management to go along with changing some of their structure. Okay, we got full-time tellers at a grade five. We got part-time and full-time credit clerks at a grade eight. The part-time, the full-time, grade five makes ten cent and four an hour. The full and part-time credit clerks make thirteen, forty-five an hour. Now, Fred tried to get management to go along with letting these full-time tellers work out of class and paying them, which is forty-five cents an hour, which would come to roughly about eleven dollars and nineteenth cents an hour, which really would bring a savings of forty-five dollars and twenty cents for, by working these full-time tellers out of class. But for some reason, management decided no, they wasn't gonna go along with that. Okay, we got a lot of departments which are interchangeable. Like, we got the North, uh, Community Center office, the Whitehaven office, and the Summer office, and the Omaha office. Okay, they, all those departments have the same thing. They have chief clerks, the employees, supervisors. Those jobs can be done with lead people in those positions. That would produce a great saving to, to the ratepayers. Okay, at the Milton office, they have a lead credit clerk. Now, the thing about this department is, it's under customer service. It should have been up on a credit and collections, which is my manager. But this lead clerk is a grade nine. A lot of the areas up on the customer service have the supervisor, an assistant supervisor, and employees. If they replaced those supervisors with lead credit clerks, with lead clerks at a grade nine, it would be a great saving to the taxpayers. You gotta look at all the EOC charges, which management, for some reason, wants to try to fight, and they end up making two jobs instead of the price of one at the ratepayers' expense. Fred cannot stop this. This is management's doing. Okay, we got race discrimination at Light Gas and Water. This is not, this is not Fred's doing. This is management's. I'm a, I gave all the council members a package. It's got an arbitrage report in it that says that Mayor, Mayor Man and Manager at Central Shops has support from Annan Ash Dixon at the EOC office, Michael Magnus, a Personnel Manager, Dwight McClure, Light Gas and Water Chief Negotiator against Fred, and Supervisor Charles McAlpin, another supervisor, Al Burrell. When you count these four managers, the two supervisors that was involved, and the one employee that helped conspire to fire this one person, you look at the side of this close to half a million dollars, it helped railroad one employee, and it had to go on... And the arbitration case itself had to pay. Had to pay for this stuff. And so, that would have been a cost if Dwight McClure and other managers would have listened to Fred Ashwell. But there's nothing Fred can do about it besides arbitrate the cases. Okay, Donald Robinson...
You need to bring your microphone to close.
Well, you had one management that, a manager making over six-thousand, sixty-nine thousand dollars a year, who's supposed to have been stealing over a hundred thousand dollars of material, you printed a request form, management haven't did anything about it. And so, that, that basically, from directions, I have just a short time to talk about it. And then we had the supervisor, Roy Gary and Jack Morrison, who, who had used up all his sick days and Roy has, has over thirty years with no sick days, not one abuse letter. But yet Dwight McClure wants to penalize the poor people even more, but, uh, in the short time, since you said speed up, that's all I can say. But you do have a package to look at, you know, and you can see everything I've said. But I wish I had more time.
Thank you. Uh, listen to... Mr. Brent Hall. Name and address for the record, Mr. Hall.
Brent Hall, sixty-six, thirty-three, Palomino Drive. Uh, I think I'll probably apologize first off, 'cause I don't have any facts and figures, 'cause, uh, I'm a lineman at Light Gas and Water, and I hang off pole for eight hours a day, and it's kinda hard time finding, getting a notepad out. I just, I wanna speak from my standpoint. I'm not on one of those eighty-one jobs to be upgraded. But with, uh, with, what we're dealt with right here on our medical insurance, it's gonna hurt people like me. It's gonna get in my pocketbook, and, you know, the percentages on the rating, on the rate increases, the percentages on the, on the raises, the upgrades, I'm looking, I'm looking at insurance, and a lot of people out here are looking at insurance. There's more than eighty-one jobs this company. And, you know, medical insurance is one thing, I know it's skyrocketing, but, you know, we don't have any control over that. We do the best we can with it, uh, you know, taking, doing the best we can with what we, with what we got. Uh, one thing I think y'all need to be very aware of is, is, uh, with the company's proposal, it's gonna cap our life insurance. It's gonna cap my life insurance at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, a hundred thousand dollars is not a whole lot of money. Sounds like it, but it's not a whole lot when I'm gone and my wife has to take care of my two-year-old. And just recently, like in the past three or four months, I've been trying to buy extra life insurance, 'cause I got a good friend sitting out here right here with me today. My, a guy I climb with every day at work, that was in a near fatal accident, just because he's trying to keep people's lights on here at Light Gas and Water. Now, you know, we're one of the few companies in, in the United States, and, and I know for a fact because, uh, we, we've been in contact with other utilities, we're one of the few companies in the United States that work as much, uh, wire hot as we do, just to keep people's lights on, just keep their TV on. And we're taking... After he got, after he got burned up, which, you know, a lot of people don't find out about that, y'all never hear about times when we take chances out there, we get people get, they get hurt bad out here. And after that happened to him, I spent the next three or four months taking care of this man. I'd do it again in a minute. But it made me start thinking. And I tried to buy some more life insurance, I can't buy it on my salary. I talked to a half a dozen different companies, and they've all got my job rated in the top five worst jobs in the United States. And you can think of what the premiums would be like. And, you know, that's something that kinda gets close to me. And, you know, another thing I think a lot of people look over at this company is how much these people sitting out here behind me and myself contribute to this city. You know, everybody thinks just 'cause you got a job at Light Gas and Water, you got it made. Well, that's not the case, you know. We take a lot of, we take a lot of slack from the pu, the public, and we get tired of it. But we have to live with it, just like y'all have to live with it and the company has to live with it. But we do a whole lot for this community. I just got, myself just got finished serving as, as the other half of the, uh, chairship for the United Way staring, I was on the United Way staring committee, I was co-chair for the union. We raised four-hundred-fifty thousand dollars for United Way this year. And we did a lot for this company, uh, for this company, we did a lot for this city. And it wasn't just hours I put into this company. My wife knows as much about United Way now as I do, 'cause I took it home with me every night. And we do a lot for this community, and I think, you know, they've gotta realize, they've got a, they've got a good utility, but the utility is built by the people who are, are working here. I just, you know, I, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of...
Bring your microphone to close.
There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things that can be, that the company can cut back on. There's a lot of thing, I, you know, there's a lot of things that both sides, we know, if we work together, we can make this a better place and we're running more efficient. But the thing I would ask all y'all to, to, you know, feel for us, and I'm just speaking for, 'cause I'm a lineman. The next time it's two o'clock in the morning, and you're laying in your bed and you're all warm, and you, and, and your heat's running, and your water's running, and your lights are burning, think about me. 'Cause at two in the morning, when it, when the lights are off, and it's twenty degrees outside and it's pouring rain, I'm gonna be out there hanging off on the south of the post somewhere, putting my life on the line, just keep lighting up. I just, I just ask it, you know, if, if y'all would keep that in mind, because we, you know, I, you know, I like my job, I like what I do, I'm proud of it, but, you know, I wanna, I wanna get something forward, you know? And, and we do, I think a lot of towns of people in Memphis, they overlook us.
Please bring it to close.
They overlook us. I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Shirley Valentine.
God bless you, I am Reverend Valentine. I'm a credit clerk counsel at the North Community Office on Summer Avenue. Uh, sir, I do need permission to speak because I was told by Assistant Labor Relations Manager Barbara McClure that I would be terminated, speaking concerning anything with Memphis Light Gas and Water.
You don't need any permission to speak for us. I, you know, I can't say anything about anything, we'll say it, only that you can just, if, if something happens after the day, then you can contact us. I don't think that's going to happen, no. I don't think that's going to happen, though.
Praise God.
Again, before you, you know, I wanna just stress it again, I mean, the, the time is moving, there's quite a few other cards, please. Uh, you're just prolonging the, the whole evening for all of us, if you could just keep the emotions down as much as you can, and I understand this emotional there. Try to contain yourself as much as you can, now, continue on.
My concerns are the healthcare program, the entire package. Healthcare is important to our lifespans, as well as the productivity on the job. And many of us have some kind of afflictions. Part of the package concerns, uh, doc on the second time the same type illness occurs. Many people suffer sickle cell anemia, diabetes, uh, kidney machine problems, asthmatic, high blood pressure, summer heart attack patients. We have these people at Memphis Light Gas and Water performing duties every day, I happen to be one of them. And there are days when I get out of bed, or try to get up, and I have problems, and I need to relax that day, or take medication. There are times when diabetics have problems with reactions from the medication. And having docs, and being doc for the same illness after one or two occurrence is a very high concern. I worked with Memphis Light Gas and Water two years with perfect attendance, with no sick days or absentees. This past year, I've suffered so much harassment and retaliation on the job, I've continuously been in and out of the doctor's office. Another thing I'd like to bring out is, we voted for all of you, because we felt that you were for the people, and what was best for the people. I spent time not only in the union office, but in my homes and church doors campaigning, and asking people to vote for this staff here. Another thing that's very important, and I'm concerned about, is, I don't want to see a height put on the taxpayers, I happen to be a taxpayer. I think that Memphis Light Gas and Water can handle this problem, give us our raises, can raise the job classifications without putting a height on the taxpayers. We have, in the United States, one president and one vice president running this country. In Memphis Light Gas and Water, we have one president and nine, and I'll remind you, nine vice presidents. We have positions in management that we could cut back on managers, and stop making management We could solve grievances before they get to arbitration. We could solve court cases that have been pending over five years with the company, to cut back on cost of legal expenses. The company could let the legal department handle their legal problems, and stop hiring five and six different law firms outside of the division to work with their legal department. We have also abuse of sick time. But that sick time does not always apply to the lower-paid employees. We have management people who is abusing sick time, and getting paid for days that they are off sick. And if you look in your pack, you'll see everything that I'm speaking about right here now.
Please bring your remarks to a close, too.
As I bring this to a close, I believe that this council is gonna do what's right
Mr. Austin, give us your name and address for the record, though.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanna thank each and every one of y'all for coming out this afternoon, and, uh, I'm here speaking for all of my brothers and sisters. And, uh, and I wanna thank all the city council for their support.
Give us your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Charlie William Austin, delivered twenty-two fifty-five Marbert Street, and I work in the gas department. And, uh, we are, and I'm very embarrassed to be here today, because, uh, if a manager had a right, uh, we wouldn't be here today. And, uh, and, uh, well, a manager knew or not, uh, if some of the, of us here today are still working with this company, uh, we, we made this company with a hammer, a sludge hammer, and a pick, and a shovel. But, uh, when it's come time for us to get a raise, uh, there's no money around. And, uh, but, uh, there's money around to hire, uh, two presidents in the press, vice president, and, uh, two vice presidents take care of, make more money than ten utility workers in the gas department. And, uh, and there are some of us, I was speaking about it, hope made this company with a pick, shovel, and a mower. We use the mower, have to use the mower to knock the pipes across the street. And, uh, and, uh, there are some of us, of us haven't had a, a pay increase in fourteen or fifteen years. And, uh, we need that, and money. So, uh, when we, uh, have to, uh, feed our family, and, uh, just like the president, vice president do. So, uh, we're asking for y'all's support. So that's all I...
Mr. Chairman, City Councilman, uh, a few years ago...
Give us your name and address for the record, Mr. Buffett.
Jay Buffett, forty-three ninety-five North Germantown Road. A few years ago, company started getting employees involved in making things work better for the company. MLGNW did the same thing. They did it in the form of action teams and quality circles. Some of them was, some of the names of one was, the Bill Busters from Customer Accounting, Brains on the Go from Work Management, Quality Control, Brunswick Innovators from Gas Distribution, Bumblebees from Credit and Collection, Fabulous Fabrication, Century Shops, Hickory Hill Hicos Water Distribution, SMAC Electric Operation, System Integritas, Terminal Headsets, and Water Dynamics from Water Distribution South. Some of these, uh, quality circles and action team accumulated a savings of one million sixty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and four cents, that's just one of the teams. Another team implemented a program proposal that earned, uh, one hundred ninety thousand for the division. Most of the private companies receive bonuses for this kind of work, when employees are involved and, and, and show the company a savings. MLGNW employees are not, don't receive these kind of bonuses. But, when contract time rolls around, this is what we are, only thing that we are asking for is a fair shake, when we are asking for, uh, an increase. Uh, we feel like the work that we do, uh, the, that these teams are done, that it wasn't part of the job, it was something that they volunteered to do. Most of these teams are made up of bargaining unit employees. And, only thing that we are asking for is a fair shake, as far as the proposal that we put before you. Uh, we are not asking for a insurance hike, where we won't be able to pay for our children going to the hospital. We're not asking for the, uh, package that MLGNW proposed, where a person is in the hospital sick themselves, if they've been sick twice before, they are being docked three days before they can receive any pay.
Mr. James E. Simmleton.
My name is James E. Simmleton, forty-two sixteen Long Creek Road. Mr. Chairman, I will ask for an exemption in myself, doc, because I do not represent the union, not affiliated with them, nor the management. I'm president of MLGNW Retirees Club, and I propose to speak primarily to what changes would, might affect retirees, and I would respectfully ask that I follow both groups after they get through, if that's permissible.
You can go right, you can go ahead now. You can go ahead right now.
Yeah.
I, you will go ahead now?
Go ahead now.
Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to address you at this time, the, what some of the employees of today spoke about were true forty years ago. About the division, what the employees did in time of need for the community, because I can remember nineteen fifty, that we had one good storm here, and there was no question about what your duties were, what you had to do, what needed to be done. Nineteen fifty-two, I believe, was, we even had a worse one. But, uh, recall, one time, I was on duty continuously for thirty-two hours. I knew what my job was, what needed to be done in order to serve the community, serve the customers, and we got the job done back then. Today, I, I do address it for retirees, and the primary thing I would like to address is the insurance, the proposed changes in the insurance. When we retire from MLGNW, we know from day one where our base retirement pay is. That will not change, it's locked in, and the only exception will be to increases due to the results of investment plans. Sometimes it's been good, sometimes medium, sometimes fair. I served fourteen years on the pension board, MLGNW, and elected my, by my fellow employees, not appointed. So, I'm not a Johnny Come lately in what I'm talking about. I've been on both sides of the fence, I was represented by the union in one time, and I effectively moved up into management before I retired, so I've been on both sides, and know what, what I'm talking about. The proposed changes in the insurance, of course, will affect the current employees. The negotiations that went on this past few months, the retirees were not represented in any way. We had no voice, no recommendations to make to anyone, we were not given updates on current conditions, other than the fact that the costs were going up all the time. How much, and how they would affect us, we didn't even know that. These changes and proposals will affect every retiree that's on a payroll today, to the extent that the old saying, what the Lord giveth, somebody else is gonna take away. The only way that you can come out even on this, if you, for the retirees today, as far as their pay, would have their retirement pay increased correspondence...
Please bring your remarks to a close.
To what their...
Bring it to a close.
Sir?
Please bring your remarks to a close.
To what their pay is. I'm sorry, I didn't understand, bring your remarks to a close. I wished you had granted me more time, since I was kinda in the middle of this thing, to get in depth with it far as retirees, but there's approximately fourteen hundred of regular retirees out there today, that, I know I speak for them, if they're not happy with the proposal, some of these increases will jump twenty-five percent in the second year. Uh, medicines, prescriptions, one will go up sixty percent, but they're gonna have a forty percent decrease on a generic type deal, so, it's, it's not a satisfactory deal for retirees, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Sam Posey.
My name is Sam Posey, president of Memphis Firefighters Association. I can understand, and I, I feel for these employees, because firefighters have been in this impasse position for two times now, and y'all know how we feel about the procedure, and we can understand what these employees are going through. I can also remember, five years ago, when we came before the council, Fred Ashwell, who was a member, and the president of IBW, came to the council on our behalf, and asked the council to look at the firefighters, and judge what you do on the firefighters, and compare our salaries and our working conditions with other firefighters across the United States. And that's, that's the reason that, that we went to impasse. We're here today to ask y'all to do the same thing on behalf of the IBW local, and compare them with other utilities. I heard Mr. Crawford, uh, earlier wanted to compare vacations, uh, with fire and police, but I can remember at the last impasse procedure, where another local came, came to the council, and they do now have eleven holidays. So, don't, don't, uh, don't compare, uh, apples with oranges, let's get the facts, judge these people on their own merits, and vote for the employees at this decision.
Mr. Fred Ashwell.
My name is Fred Ashwell, I'm business manager of IBW Local twelve-eight-eight, four-thousand Cribble Circle, Memphis, Tennessee. I know what I've got to say, some of you, has a biased mystic significance as a drop of rainwater in the river out there, but I'm gonna say it. Uh, you've, you've looked at the little summary of, uh, the impact, and, and I can't say whether those figures are accurate or not, I don't have any idea. We've heard a couple of other figures, so I don't know, I, I assume these are the final figures, and they may be correct. And, listening to some of the things that's been said here by Mr. Crawford about some of these things, listening to what was said at the impasse hearing, you would categorize us as heartless, selfish, inconsiderate crooks, you know? The tone of three million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars makes us look like we're crooks, but we're not. We're representing this community. This is this community. These are, these are the ratepayers. These people have never come down here and asked you for a thing. All of the Memphis Light Gas and Water have never once tried down here to ask you for a thing. Now, seems like that this is a big concern about four million dollars difference. Well, I assure you, that four million dollars is not gonna be put in a suitcase, and stuck on a bus, and carried out of town. That four million dollars is gonna go back into the, these folks' pocket, who in turn buy groceries in this community, who in turn go to the doctors in this community... groceries in this community, who in turn go to the doctors in this community, eat at the restaurants, shop at the department stores. In fact, that money is going right back into the economy of this community. We're not asking for a lot. I didn't come up here to create a problem. We're asking for a fair shake. We have skilled crafts at the company, and I'm talking about skilled crafts, that are paid twenty-eight cents an hour to three dollars a cents an hour, less than the same skilled craft down here at the city. Now, when I sit through the impasse hearings, I heard a comment about fiscal responsibility. Well, if you'll take a look at MLG and W management salaries and tell me that's fiscal responsibility, you could call me the Easter Bunny. Now, all we're asking for is a fair shake. They have a program down here today that they apply twelve dollars and fifty cents a month to the employees that belong to a health spa. Now, they say they only gonna allow so many to belong, and I'd just like to know who they're gonna pick to belong. Now, why can't that twelve fifty be applied to the healthcare package? And let me point something else out. I have never, ever refused to sit down and deal with healthcare. We have made changes in healthcare over the years, and we made some changes at the table this time. We just wouldn't agree to all their changes. We would not agree to all of them. We agreed to wait until next year and sit down and deal with a problem if we had one, but when the insurance system is gonna be in the black for the first time I can remember in ten years at the end of the year projected to be, there was no need to make a tremendous amount of change. There was nothing wrong at that point. Now, all I'm asking you for is a fair shake. All these folks are asking you for is a fair shake. Now, like I said, we're not taking the money out of this community, and I apologize to you folks for bringing this down here, and I apologize to my members for being put through what they've been put through. I apologize to them for what could very well happen to them tonight, because you voted the wrong way. And I hope they find in their hearts to forgive me for what's happened here. But I implore you to look at what we're talking about here. And I'm not gonna debate the rate increase with you, but they're asking for something to the tune of twenty-eight million dollars. Well, we're asking for four million dollars, and it ain't going into no damn concrete building, it's going into the lives of these people and their families.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Mark Allen. I'm an attorney for IBEW Local twelve-eight-eight. Let me begin by saying that if MLG and W had not come to the bargaining table in this case, intent on taking healthcare and sick leave benefits away from its employees, and refusing to bargain over them while coming to this council and asking for a rate increase, we would not be before the council at impasse. I have reviewed the taped recordings of the collective bargaining sessions between MLG and the union, and it is absolutely clear that the division approached those sessions with the position that the union must take every item of its proposal to cut health and life insurance and its new dental plan as a package, or we would wind up exactly where we are today, and that is at impasse. When the union attempted to discuss or negotiate certain items in the insurance plan, the division said, "It's a package deal. We'll consider implementation of the plan over some period of time, two, three, or maybe even four years," but there's no change to be made in the plan. The division's position was just like saying, "I'm gonna cut your hand off. If you'd like, I'd do it one finger at a time, one time this year, one time next year, one time maybe four years from now, but ultimately, I'm gonna take off your whole hand." The division has stated during impasse proceedings, and I believe will probably state again before this council, that the determination of which offer is to be accepted is an issue of fiscal responsibility. However, the subject of fiscal responsibility should be turned back to division management to reflect on itself. Why are so many non-bargaining unit employees and managers making exorbitant salaries? You have ten people in management at Light Gas and Water making about a million dollars. Why is so much money being spent on travel by MLG and W managers? Why are so many managers driving company vehicles, taking them home, and having car allowances at a time when this type of perk is being eliminated from other areas of government? I don't have specific answers to these questions, because the division said it would cost well over a thousand dollars when the union requested this information to find out. The real reason I don't have this information, nor do you, is because they don't want the council to know. The division wants to treat itself as if it were a private utility company, not responsible to this council nor the taxpayers. It wants to keep this council ignorant of the facts and have it formulate an opinion based only upon the information they spoon-steated. MLG and W has come to the council requesting a rate increase, which I believe they contend would raise the average ratepayer's bill about three dollars and seventy-six cents per month. I believe it was also estimated that if the union's proposal were accepted, this would add an additional thirty cents per month. The MLG and W justification for its rate increase is a vague one-based diploma accumulated debt. That's management of MLG and W. During the course of the impasse proceedings, we have pointed out some of these areas of flesh funds within the MLG and W for training, travel, and other perks. Why hasn't the division cut some of these unnecessary areas and given the average employee the ability not to lose ground? All we're asking for is that the average employee in the bargaining unit at MLG and W not end up at a loss as a result of these impasse negotiations. There has been an indication by some council members that they are not inclined to give MLG and W employees more than the three percent awarded other city employees. However, MLG and W employees are not treated the same as city employees for other purposes. Retired City of Memphis employees pay nothing for health insurance. MLG and W retirees pay premiums. MLG and W employees under the division's proposal will have increased contribution cost to health insurance, which would in some cases totally eliminate any raise, even at their own three percent. Further, the union has requested the upgrade of certain jobs in order to put them on parity with equivalent city jobs. A plumber at MLG and W is in a lower classification than a plumber for the city. The proposal to upgrade jobs is aimed at creating parity. The proposal to, excuse me, if you're to follow the argument that MLG and W employees do not deserve more than any other city employee, then you still can't accept MLG and W's proposal, because to do so would place MLG and W employees in a worse condition than other city employees. The impasse procedure before the council is, there's no word for it, inequitable. Everybody thinks that. It promotes disharmony and penalizes one party or the other when legitimate proposals are left unresolved. I didn't write it, neither did you. Certainly, the union did not write it. As a matter of fact, I know who wrote it, division management wrote it. And they knew exactly how to use it to force its position upon its employees. The question is whether this council intends to allow the division to write an impasse procedure, refuse to negotiate in good faith over the terms of an agreement, and then use that same impasse procedure to hurt its retirees, lower-paid employees, and those employees with legitimate illnesses, who are in fact the most defenseless people in the process. You may not like all aspects of the union's or MLG and W's proposal, therefore you must consider the least defensive proposal. This is not a fight over upgrading jobs, this is not a fight over holidays, this is not even a fight over three percent versus a three-point-five percent raise. This is really a fight over this company's unilateral implementation of an insurance plan and a sick leave policy that penalizes those persons least able to protect themselves. Should you accept MLG and W's proposal, you must realize that you will be creating the following scenarios. Number one, retirees drawing minimum salary of seven hundred and fifty dollars a month or nine thousand dollars a year will have to pay seven hundred dollars per year for one hospital stay. That's seven-point-five percent of their income. If an employee gets sick and is making eighteen thousand dollars a year in nineteen ninety-three, even with the raise, they will end up with a net loss in pay of a hundred and fifty-one dollars and still have an additional three hundred and sixty dollars to pay for this proposed dental insurance plan, which only pays a half of your benefits, but charges you an extraordinary premium. If that same employee happens to be hospitalized for the third time, he or she will start losing pay. The contract doesn't speak to what occurs on the fourth or fifth time illness occurs, I don't know how much more benefits they're gonna lose. While all of this is going on, the division is offering twelve dollars and fifty cents a month benefit to go to the health spa. A benefit only used by those who can afford it. The division is giving cars to its management staff, the division is spending close to a half million dollars on travel, and the division has one non-bargaining unit employee or management employee for every three bargaining unit employees. Management proposals are designed to have the greatest impact on bargaining unit employees. To a manager making eighty thousand dollars, the cost of health insurance is negligible, but it is not to a utility worker or somebody in a lower-paid classification making about twenty thousand dollars. It's clear to me, and I follow, it's clear to me that MLG and W's proposals will hurt the people who need help the most. Those working men and women of this community who have dedicated their lives to the betterment of this city deserve better treatment than this. They deserve fairness and equity. I would rather pay a few cents or a few more cents on my utility bill, since I live in the city of Memphis, and know that the money is specifically going into the pockets of division employees to support their families so that they can participate in the economy of Memphis, rather than pay some extra cents to the division and have that money disappear into some management slush fund, which I guarantee you is where it's gonna disappear. I therefore respectfully request that you veto the impasse committee's recommendation and accept the union's last best offer.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question of Mr. Allen, if that's the last card? Mr. Allen, if you could come to the mic, please. Question I have to ask, and I wanna make sure I understood you correctly, because this is a very important question to me. It sounded as if you said that the company, MLG and W, refused to negotiate on some items during the negotiating period, and then told you that those items were negotiable later on. Is that what you're saying?
Something similar to that. What I'm saying is that MLG and W came to the table with this insurance package and said, "This is our insurance package. We can sit here and talk about it, but it's a package deal, we're not gonna change it. Either you agree to what we talk about in this package, or we don't have a deal. You take it or you leave it." Later on, when we got to the impasse procedure, they said, "Oh, we would've talked about that." But they didn't talk about it, and I got the tapes, if you wanna hear them.
Counselor Marshall?
Mr. Chairman, I wanna thank all of those who are present. I know this is a tough issue, and quite honestly, as serving, and having the honor to serve on behalf of the union on the impasse committee, I can honestly state that the procedure's flawed. I agree with Mr. Ashwell, I agree with Mr. Allen. It's a stacked deck against you, and I want to tell you, all of you, that no matter what happens tonight, I promise to do my best to rework that ordinance and make it work in everybody's benefit next time around. I can't, Mr. Chairman, I can't support Memphis Light Gas and Water, and I'd like to point out two specific reasons that are harmful and unfair. First of all, Memphis Light Gas and Water asks that on the third incident of sick leave, that the employee will lose his sick leave benefit. That's totally regardless of the legitimacy, of what legitimacy may occur. I mean, there might be, it's completely within the realm of possibility that a person can get sick three times. This makes, this puts the presumption of guilt on the employee instead of the presumption of innocence, and that's just unfair. In addition to that, as Counselor Wilson pointed out, and I heard the tape, and it was pretty unbelievable. In fact, it moved quite a few of us, I think all of us on the committee. MLG and W came to the table and said that, "We have a healthcare package that cannot be changed, take it or leave it." That's not fair. That's not fair, Mr. Chairman, and I'll tell you why, because the spiraling upward cost of healthcare is incredible. I think of the senior citizens on a fixed income, that having to deal with these costs is continually to erode their base, their very livelihood. People in their own homes, locked up, almost imprisoned, afraid because they don't have the money to be free, and this society is amazing to me, because all their money is going to pay their healthcare, a time when healthcare is most important to them. Mr. Chairman, we have talked about fiscal responsibility, and I think we have a moral responsibility to all of these people out here. My moral responsibility tells me that I'd rather invest four million dollars in these people rather than eight million dollars in a building any day.
Counselor McCormick?
Mr. Ashwell, I have a question, if you don't mind coming by.
Yes, ma'am.
If the move to override, I mean, to veto the decision is in effect, I mean, it passes tonight, what effect will that have on your retired employees, such as the gentleman who came up and spoke to us about their healthcare? Are you taking care of the retirees?
It takes care of them to a degree. We agreed at the bargaining table to increase the deductible from two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars the first year. Sit down again in nineteen ninety-three to look to see what we needed to do in ninety-four. We also agreed to go up on some of the copays and some of the other things. It doesn't eliminate the first dollar coverage on the MLG and W plan, which about eighty-five percent of the retirees are on. The plan now covers the first two thousand dollars at a hundred percent. We proposed that that remained the same, we didn't change that. The company's proposing changing it, which that's what the increase out of pocket is on the front end of that. If you look at that, if you drop it and go to an eighty-twenty split, that means that, and they wanted to do it over two years, it's a thousand dollars a year, that's two hundred dollars a year for that retiree, and that plan has probably got at least eighty-five percent of our retirees on it. So, theirs is gonna have an impact on retirees, yes, ma'am. Ours doesn't have as much of an impact. It does increase the deductible fifty dollars, but it kept the out-of-pocket the same.
All right, thank you, you answered.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Moore?
You mentioned, sir, it didn't get through. What you were fixing, starting to say, what affects the unions if we accepted the union's proposal and the company proposal? I'd like for you to cover that for me, if you would. What effect would that have on retirees if we voted for the union's proposal first?
Frankly, both of them will have an effect on retirees.
Sir?
I say frankly, both of them would have an effect on retirees.
What kind of effect?
Because the deductible will increase either way. As I understand it, the union's proposal is less severe in the long run than management's. Management's has some included in their package that would go up twenty-five percent the first year, and then more so the second year. And also, we have not been informed whether the premiums are gonna increase, decrease, or just whether they're gonna go there. So, we don't really know as far as retirees. They may know more about it than we do, but we haven't had any communication in that respect. So, we don't really know. We know it's not really good at the present time, because what has been proposed and what they're talking about, the union negotiates for their present employees, which will be future retirees. But today, we're talking about the retirees are already on the road, and that is the difference.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Mr. Crawford? It's been mentioned that, and I heard this yesterday, that Light Gas and Water is paying some employees a membership at the tune of twelve dollars and fifty cents per month to join a spa. I'd like to know, sir, your... I'd like to know, uh, sir, your comments on this, but I'd like to know what spa this is, and, uh, and what this, uh-
If, if I might, I would like, uh, just Peggy Fredo Harvey to come up and address that.
Okay, sir.
The reason I say that, one thing that was said earlier about that, that that wasn't available to all employees, and certainly it would be, but it's, it's part of our overall health program, of trying to people stay healthy, and, uh, we, we can address that. By the way, I'm not a member of a health spa, so-
The proposal is that we pay up to a hundred and fifty dollars on, uh, a membership for any employee to join a fitness club or exercise. That is a part of our, uh, wellness proposal, and our wellness package. Our healthcare package is based on the concept of preventive, um, health, and it is an effort to curb illness and keep employees fit, so it is not, we think, um, a luxury, and that is, again, available to all employees, and is half, they pay part of the, the package on-
It is available to all-
All employees.
All employees.
All employees.
What is, what, what do you estimate the cost of this?
Uh, we have spent about fifty thousand dollars, there are only about forty employees available, and that's over a two-year period.
Of course, you know, I commend you for that, but at the same time, I, I, uh, criticize you for it, because number one is, I don't know any, uh, one on this council, other than, uh, maybe, uh, one or two that belong to a health spa, and they probably don't go, but, But, let me say that, that, that it bothers me, when we start talking about taking benefits away from a health program for employees, then we're turning around and spending this kinda money for them to go to a health spa, and-
Count, count-
And, uh, you know, we just, some members of this council just returned from a meeting of the National League of Cities, and, uh, at that meeting, uh, everybody from all over America have the same problem, and that's money. But it was also, in one meeting that I attended, it, it was stated that, that most government employees, seventy-five percent of all government employees, in a survey that was taken throughout America, said that there was a, a tremendous waste in government, and they were questioned as to what percentage they thought was wasted, and they said forty-nine percent. The point I'm making, I believe this health spa, twelve dollars and fifty cents a month, or the fifty thousand, plus whatever you're going to spend, is a waste of money, and I think that, that we need to look in those areas, we need to look in those areas, and see if we can't come up with something equitable. I, when I sat down here tonight, I had my, I was leaning in one direction, but there's a lot of good points been made here tonight, and, uh, as I look at the increase that you're asking for, then, uh, as was pointed out by Mr. Ashwell, or the attorney one, that, that it would take only thirty cents to, uh, do, uh, the union's proposal, and it's, and we're looking at three dollars and seventy-six cents for buildings and, and different things, and as all of you know, I have, uh, certainly, uh, been, uh, a people person, and I feel like the people of this community, first of all, need to be taken care of, so, I still have not made up my mind which way I'm going to vote, but I have real problems with things like health spas and these type things, especially since it's been pointed out throughout the League of Cities. Not just criticizing you, Mr. Crawford, I have all the respect and the wealth of you, but I do think there's a tremendous waste in government, I've said it not only at Light Gas and Water, but in the city of Memphis, and, uh, I think it's time that we buckle our belts and, uh, and cut the waste out, and, uh, hopefully then there'll be money left to do the things that you wanna do, plus what the employees want. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Respectfully, uh, Councilman Moore, we started the memberships as a result of employee input, and it-